Okay, thank you.
Really cool.
Here we are in Noah Town Hall. It's February 25th, 2019. The Norwood Planning Board is meeting in room 12. And the first order of business is the approval of the minutes from February 11th, 2019. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes as passed out to the...
Do I have a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion regarding the minutes? No? Everything's in good order? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, five zero. 7:05 having arrived. The next item is our minor site plan approval signed for Sheffin Eaton at the Cakery. 645 Washington Street, Edith Wakina Ona. Would you like to come up?
Yes.
Cakery and a nail salon? Now, Patrick, have you looked at this?
Yeah, so the sign itself is actually three feet two inches by 18 feet four inches, but here at fault we had a discussion of another sign regarding whether, how you look at how a sign is measured, whether it's the sign itself or whether it's the dimensions of the lettering. So I discussed that with Mark Schuber, and so that's almost how the definition is written with the zoning bylaws, is you measure the lettering itself as the, as what you look for for the area of a particular sign. So in doing that, the sign just placed on the lettering is two feet six inches by 11 feet 11 inches. Comes up to about 29.79 square feet. So that has been compliant with bylaw 6.2.16.2.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? Yes.
Could you explain that to me again?
So...
I don't have any idea what you just said, sorry. Do you?
The sign itself...
I understand that.
Is larger than 30 square feet. However, based upon how sign area is written in the zoning bylaw you measure...
What's written on?
How the sign area is calculated...
Okay.
And how it's written in the signing by, in the zoning bylaw, in the definitions section, you measure based upon how much the...
Lettering takes up.
The area, how much the lettering takes up. So looking at that, I was able to get the dimensions, and it is within 30 square feet. So it's allowed within the zoning bylaw.
Okay. And my other question is, what kind of business is this?
Bakery.
I thought so. Who said nail salon?
No, no, well...
Okay.
You did.
It says bakery.
You need your nails done anyhow.
I do need my nails done, but I did not say, okay.
What's your spec?
So you're going to put the, the colors are burgundy.
Yes.
And you're going to put the sign, and because Bree and I haven't gotten on the sign thing yet, we're just getting more vinyl with plastic letters. You're doing a vinyl sign?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And you're going to use the overheads?
That are existing. You're going to do all the baking on premise?
Yes.
From scratch?
From scratch baking.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Is it just cake or?
Bread, everything else, bakery.
I'm just asking for Ernie, he's interested.
Oh.
He's got a deep interest.
Well.
So, I just some bread, real good bread.
Multi-grain.
Multi-grain, you know, I'm a, I'm a member for Brad Baker's guilt, so real good bread.
We had a good bread baker in town, we lost him. He moved the hull, the bread basket. He made all kinds of...
It's your turn to do a commercial, because this will go on TV, so make a pitch.
Again, what number Washington Street listed?
Follow the smell.
645 Washington Street.
645 Washington Street. What is your schedule of renovating and getting in here? And when, what's your target date to open?
Well, we're looking at March, so right now that, once we have everything going, because the guys are already on standby, but they're doing jobs, and I, we wanted to wait to come tonight so we can call them up and say, okay, we got the permits, let's get going, everything, you know, so as soon as they can get, you know, get in there.
Well, this is just for the sign. Have you started doing the inside of the building yet?
We have the permit, the contractor will be in this week, so the framing will go up by the end of this week inside.
You're right up here, right, you're right on the main drag, right?
Yeah.
We better hurry up and vote on this so they can get going.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman. Have we approved the sign request?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Any questions? Comments?
My comment, and that is, the way this appears here, the font is narrow, this looks very light, and you should make sure that when the sign is manufactured that those letters will stand out enough, you make sure that they're wide enough so that, you know, you can see all this. This is probably just a way of photocopying, but you want to make sure that you're visible from the street.
Okay, for sure.
Because Ernie doesn't want to get lost in these little...
And my, my only comment is, not for you ladies, we need to, we need to upgrade our sign bylaws. And I'm sure your sign will be nice, but we'd like you to be there longer, so you're just under the wire. Bree and I are going to get this done by September. Town meeting.
Anything for other?
That's it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five to nothing, unanimous.
Thank you.
Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
We'll write, tomorrow we'll write an approval letter for you.
Yes.
And we will send a copy to the building department, and then you have to get your building permit for fixing it to the side of the building. So there's another sign permit that you need.
Okay.
And we'll give you the letter to bring to the building department.
Okay.
And that permit is, you know, about how you fasten physically the sign to the wall.
Okay, that's...
You contract them how to do that.
Yes, me too.
Good luck. In and open. Looking forward to it.
Our next item of business is the site plan approval in Manhattan Street Convent redevelopment. Daniel Merrick in Legacy Engineering LLC, David Hearn, David Hearn Law.
Good evening.
Good evening. Did he get a copy of this? Did he get a copy of this? Did he get a copy of this?
No, I don't have that.
This is from a neighbor across the street.
I just passed those out.
What's his name?
That just came in today.
Oh. Can we get those sent over to me?
Yep.
Okay, are we ready to go? There's no public...
I had nothing to do with it, I just got it.
No, I know you didn't. I want to show it to my...
Do I have a copy?
Yeah, it was the one that Paul dropped on our pile before we sat down.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, you want me to proceed?
Please do.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. My name is David Hearn Jr., I'm an attorney with offices here in Norwood, and I am here this evening on behalf of Manhattan Development LLC, which is a company created to do a redevelopment of the site that for, wanted a better name, we call the Convent Site, the site of the former convent of St. Downton's Parish at 253 Manhattan Street. With me this evening, our engineer, Dan Merrick in Legacy Engineering, also in the front row, Mike Sullivan, who's one of the principals of Manhattan Development, and next to him, Brian Donahue, who is our architect on the project. This is a project by which my clients propose to redevelop the site by removing the existing convent building and building 19, well, we were originally proposing 19 units, townhouse style condominium units on a private driveway that would have a circular turnaround at the top of the driveway. It's before you for site plan approval. We did need some zoning relief, which we obtained from the zoning board last week, a special permit for multifamily housing, which is required. This property, by the way, is in the general business district.
Okay, thank you. Here we are in Noah Town Hall. It's February 25th, 2019. The Norwood Planning Board is meeting in room 12. And the first order of business is the approval of the minutes from February 11th, 2019. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes as passed out to the...
Do I have a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion regarding the minutes? No? Everything's in good order? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, five zero. 7:05 having arrived. The next item is our minor site plan approval signed for Sheffin Eaton at the Cakery. 645 Washington Street, Edith Wakina Ona. Would you like to come up?
Yes.
Now, Patrick, have you looked at this?
Yeah, so the sign itself is actually three feet two inches by 18 feet four inches, but here at fault we had a discussion of another sign regarding whether, how you look at how a sign is measured, whether it's the sign itself or whether it's the dimensions of the lettering. So I discussed that with Mark Schuber, and so that's almost how the definition is written with the zoning bylaws, is you measure the lettering itself as the, as what you look for for the area of a particular sign. So in doing that, the sign just placed on the lettering is two feet six inches by 11 feet 11 inches. Comes up to about 29.79 square feet. So that has been compliant with bylaw 6.2.16.2.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? Yes.
Could you explain that to me again?
So...
I don't have any idea what you just said, sorry. Do you?
The sign itself...
I understand that.
Is larger than 30 square feet. However, based upon how sign area is written in the zoning bylaw you measure...
What's written on?
How the sign area is, is calculated...
Okay.
And how it's written in the signing by, in the zoning bylaw, in the definitions section, you measure based upon how much the...
Lettering takes up.
The area, how much the lettering takes up. So looking at that, I was able to get the dimensions, and it is within 30 square feet. So it's allowed within the zoning bylaw.
Okay. And my other question is, what, what kind of business is this?
Bakery.
I thought so. Who said nail salon?
No, no, well...
Okay.
You did.
It says bakery.
You need your nails done anyhow.
I do need my nails done, but I did not say, okay.
What's your spec?
So you're going to put the, the colors are burgundy.
Yes.
And you're going to put the sign, and because Bree and I haven't gotten on the sign thing yet, we're just getting more vinyl with plastic letters. You're doing a vinyl sign?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And you're going to use the overheads?
That are existing. You're going to do all the baking on premise?
Yes.
From scratch?
From scratch baking.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Is it just cake or?
Bread, everything else, bakery.
I'm just asking for Ernie, he's interested.
Oh.
He's got a deep interest.
Well...
So, I just some bread, real good bread.
Multi-grain.
Multi-grain, you know, I'm a, I'm a member for Brad Baker's guilt, so real good bread.
We had a good bread baker in town, we lost him. He moved the hull, the bread basket. He made all kinds of...
It's your turn to do a commercial, because this will go on TV, so make a pitch.
Again, what number Washington Street listed?
Follow the smell.
645 Washington Street.
645 Washington Street. What is your schedule of renovating and getting in here? And when, what's your target date to open?
Well, we're looking at March, so right now that, once we have everything going, because the guys are already on standby, but they're doing jobs, and I, we wanted to wait to come tonight so we can call them up and say, okay, we got the permits, let's get going, everything, you know, so as soon as they can get, you know, get in there.
Well, this is just for the sign. Have you started doing the inside of the building yet?
We have the permit, the contractor will be in this week, so the framing will go up by the end of this week inside.
You're right up here, right, you're right on the main drag, right?
Yeah.
We better hurry up and vote on this so they can get going.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman. Have we approved the sign request?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Any questions? Comments?
My comment, and that is, the way this appears here, the font is narrow, this looks very light, and you should make sure that when the sign is manufactured that those letters will stand out enough, you make sure that they're wide enough so that, you know, you can see all this. This is probably just a way of photocopying, but you want to make sure that you're visible from the street.
Okay, for sure.
Because Ernie doesn't want to get lost in these little...
And my, my only comment is, not for you ladies, we need to, we need to upgrade our sign bylaws. And I'm sure your sign will be nice, but we'd like you to be there longer, so you're just under the wire. Bree and I are going to get this done by September. Town meeting.
Anything for other?
That's it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five to nothing, unanimous.
Thank you.
Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
We'll write, tomorrow we'll write an approval letter for you.
Yes.
And we will send a copy to the building department, and then you have to get your building permit for fixing it to the side of the building. So there's another sign permit that you need.
Okay.
And we'll give you the letter to bring to the building department.
Okay.
And that permit is, you know, about how you fasten physically the sign to the wall.
Okay, that's...
You contract them how to do that.
Yes.
In and open. Looking forward to it.
Our next item of business is the site plan approval in Manhattan Street Convent redevelopment. Daniel Merrick in Legacy Engineering LLC, David Hearn, David Hearn Law.
Good evening.
Good evening. Did he get a copy of this? Did he get a copy of this? Did he get a copy of this?
No, I don't have that.
This is from a neighbor across the street.
I just passed those out.
What's his name? That just came in today.
Oh. Can we get those sent over to me?
Yep.
Okay, are we ready to go? There's no public...
I had nothing to do with it, I just got it.
No, I know you didn't. I want to show it to my...
Yeah, it was the one that Paul dropped on our pile before we sat down.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, you want me to proceed?
Please do.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. My name is David Hearn Jr., I'm an attorney with offices here in Norwood, and I am here this evening on behalf of Manhattan Development LLC, which is a company created to do a redevelopment of the site that for, wanted a better name, we call the Convent Site, the site of the former convent of St. Downton's Parish at 253 Manhattan Street. With me this evening, our engineer, Dan Merrick in Legacy Engineering, also in the front row, Mike Sullivan, who's one of the principals of Manhattan Development, and next to him, Brian Donahue, who is our architect on the project. This is a project by which my clients propose to redevelop the site by removing the existing convent building and building 19, well, we were originally proposing 19 units, townhouse style condominium units on a private driveway that would have a circular turnaround at the top of the driveway. It's before you for site plan approval. We did need some zoning relief, which we obtained from the zoning board last week, a special permit for multifamily housing, which is required. This property, by the way, is in the general business district, and so we needed a special permit for multifamily housing, which is the only way you get multifamily housing in any district in the town. We also needed relief with respect to the 150-foot setback from the district boundary line. The district boundary line between the general business district and the residential district runs down the middle of Manhattan Street in front of our frontage on Manhattan Street. And the zoning board granted relief with respect to that. The zoning board also granted relief for the development in terms of flexible, viewing it as flexible residential development under section 4.2.1 of the zoning bylaw. So we have in place the approval of the zoning board for the relief that we needed. The plans that you have have not been updated yet to reflect that we agreed with the zoning board that we used the number of units from 19 to 18. And the unit that is being removed is the first one on the left as you go into the property. I think it's numbered one, and the present number of the units. We also agreed that the unit opposite that, the first one on the right as you go in, would be pushed back so that there would be a minimum 20-foot setback from the property line. And with that, the zoning board was satisfied. When we settled all the details on the plans to reflect the removal of that unit one, to show the sliding back of the other building on the right-hand side, and any other changes that may be necessitated either by this, our discussions and the approval of this board or anyone else in the town, we will file a final plan with the zoning board, and they will then release the decision. And of course, there would be a final plan to be filed with this board in connection with any site plan approval. This is a project that, while located in the, in the business zone, will be of residential use. And if you're familiar with the neighborhood, as I imagine you are, the property in question is surrounded on three sides essentially by residential use, and on the fourth side by the school, St. Downton School. Of the various uses that we could do as a matter of right, our feeling is that what we're proposing and what's been approved by the zoning board by special permit, multifamily housing, is a more suitable use for the site, considering the neighborhood, considering the school, than putting in something like a childcare center that we could put in as a matter of right, or an office building, or a large apartment block. So that's what is before you. The plans, as I said, are not completely up to date because of the changes that occurred after last, in connection with the vote of the zoning board last Tuesday night. We did meet with the department heads, the usual meeting with the planning department and department heads of the other major departments last Wednesday, the 20th, and there were notes taken and discussions on different concerns or observations by, in particular, the light department, fire department, and I know that Mr. Ryan had sent a memorandum that we got a copy of prior to the meeting. So Mr. Merrick can fill us in better than I can on some of those issues. I understand he's meeting with Mr. Ryan sometime in the next day or two. He'll be in communication with the fire department, and with respect to the light department, they, their comments essentially were, this is what you can do with this pole, what you can do with that pole, and what, certain technical details of what they would want in connection with any underground wiring that we might do. We propose in this plan to, in the redevelopment, to change the slope of the property somewhat. It is a sloping property. You'll see from the plan that there is a significant outcropping of ledge in back of some of the houses on Manhattan Street that are just above the convent site, and that limits some of what we can do. We propose to have an underground infiltration system to catch the stormwater, which right now just runs across the site with no control. And we have a landscaping plan that we'll be happy to go over with you so that we can show you what we are proposing for landscaping. It's a plan that we think makes sense for the property, and it's a plan that we think will be an asset to the immediate neighborhood, an asset to the town. But I would ask, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, we have Mr. Merrick run through some of the details of the plans. He's prepared the plans, except the landscape plan, he had outside outfit help him with that. And Mr. Donahue, also, we have some renderings of the proposed buildings. Mr. Donahue can show us those and go over those with us. Happy to take questions whenever you want, but if not, we'll have Mr. Merrick give us a rundown.
Just before we start, that unit two, you said you had to move that back. How far back?
We're moving it back so it'll have a setback of 20 feet. Right now it's 16 point something feet. So it's only going back a few feet from where we were originally proposing, but we were asked by one of the neighbors to move, well, one of the neighbors in particular, I think, wanted us to get rid of a couple of units at least out on the Manhattan Street side. And we agreed, and the zoning board accepted, that we would get rid of unit number one, and that we would slide the building across from that, back from the street, so that there would be a 20-foot setback. That's at least as much and probably more than most of the houses on Manhattan Street in that neighborhood.
That's the minimum setback for the adjacent residential zoning district?
Yeah. Minimum setback. I mean, our setback is zero in the, in the business zone. So we're providing the 20-foot setback to conform to what the residential zone would normally require. My comment, though, is that the neighboring houses, I don't think have a 20-foot setback by and large, either on the same side of the street or across the street.
So you're moving it roughly four feet, and it, you'll make, you'll lose just some space between six and seven?
I think we're going to slide the whole block of the two buildings back, the four feet, and preserve that gap between those two sets of buildings.
And the other one will move over, okay. And you've got room there because you've got that green space?
That's our stormwater management area. I've got room to take up four feet.
Okay.
Where are you talking about? Not unit one, these.
Over there on this side.
Across from unit one.
They're going to move it, they're going to move this, everything down to about here, just a few feet. Okay. And the road itself is, how, what's the width of the road?
It was 20 feet with cactus burn on that side, so... It's 20 feet with caked ground on either side, so 22 feet. We're talking to the fire department right now. They may want it to be wider, but I have to meet with the fire department to discuss that aspect of it.
Okay.
Go over the plan?
Yeah.
So I think, as you're familiar with the site, this is the church property here. So you guys endorsed an A&R plan a little while back, some months back, basically curving up just under two acres of land here. It contains the convent and all of those pertinent systems that go with it. And those are proposed to be demolished, which leaves us this site here. As Mr. Hearn said, we have now 18 units. We're going to take this block of buildings and slide them back. Probably four feet or so, four or five feet. Over here, I'm not sure what I'm going to do just yet. I may still end up with a triple building out front, but it would be setback further and then, you know, make this a two, or I could make this a double and make this a triple. Still flushing that out. But in one way or another, one of these buildings, one of these units goes away. And we'll take this back. Right now, the setback is 11.1 feet, so this is going to come back again to at least 20 feet and probably more in that corner. We have a two-way private driveway. It's not a road, it's a private driveway. This is basically a condominium site. So the condominium association will own the entire property, be responsible for all the maintenance. The town's not going to be responsible for anything. Comes in, circulates with a circular driveway out back. Every unit has two-car garage with two parking spaces in front of it. So every building has basically four parking spaces available to it. We have utility systems proposed, and I've seen Mr. Ryan's comment memo. I'm meeting with him tomorrow just to go over the particulars of it. But basically, we are bringing water in, talk to the fire department. They want us to spot the hydrants in some different locations, so we're going to make those modifications. We're bringing electric in. Obviously, we talked to the electric company about exactly how we're going to come off with having two different poles. And one of the things Mr. Ryan asked us to do was to take at least the mouth of this from Unit 5 back and widen it to 24 feet. So in so doing, we may end up having to relocate a pole. Ship this pole over. The light department may elect to add another pole there if they think it's necessary. This area here is left open because this is where we have a significant rock outcropping. It basically straddles the lot line between these adjacent residential properties and our site. All we're doing basically on our side, we're not taking the outcropping out. We're basically just taking our side of it and cutting it back, maybe eight or 10 feet. So the rock outcropping is going to remain along the lot line. It extends into the adjacent properties anyways.
And you'll be doing that? There'll be some blasting?
It's hard to say. It depends on how weathered the rock is. You don't really... you can't really assess it until you've stripped all the overburden off and can figure out whether or not it can be hammered. There may be some blasting involved. If it is, we've explained in front of the zoning board that, you know, it's a very carefully regulated process that goes through the fire department. They offer pre-blast surveys to all the surrounding homes, and they have to monitor vibration at the property boundaries and all the way through the process. Well, drainage, we have... We're basically going to pick up all of our roof runoff and by gutter downspouts and pipe it. And then we have catch basins. We have catch basins up in this area and also down at the entrance. We have a small infiltration system here. And we have a larger underground infiltration system here. And it's basically going to capture, pre-treat, and infiltrate the runoff. And I'm going to be talking to Mark tomorrow about the particulars of that. Sounds like he might want me to put an overflow connection out into probably Manhattan Street, but I have to see what he wants to do with that. But we've designed this system to accommodate the 100-year storm. We also have a landscape...
Dan, on that, there was another infiltration that...
We haven't... we...
We show it, but we're not...
The plant currently has a small infiltration system here. The neighbors on Railroad Avenue have indicated that they have some groundwater issues. So we're going to eliminate that. And we're basically just going to make this one a little bit bigger over here. This is adjacent to the parking lots. This is the school parking lot. So we're going to get rid of this underground infiltration system on the next plan revision and just make that a touch bigger, and that'll handle it. We have had a landscape plan prepared. Steve Cosmos from...
Just one question for you.
Yes?
So back here on the corner by railroad...
Yeah.
Where they get water in the back, that's where all the trees are. You're going to get rid of all those pesky trees, eh?
We're not going to get rid of all the pesky trees.
We're going to get rid of the pesky trees that the neighbors have asked us to get rid of.
This neighbor has asked us to remove the trees here because they are... the roots are destroying her stone wall. So we're going to remove the existing trees and plant new ones.
Okay, so this infiltration system in the corner, because in all due respect, Mr. Hearn, we're going to... The stormwaters is now just running off the property, but there's a building on here, and all the rest of it is green and wood.
Yes, we can count for that in the drainage design. So right now, everything sheet glows into the parking lot. You know, the very... the very front sheet glows out to Manhattan Street. The rest of the property just sheet glows into the parking lot, the school right now. So there's no... there's no capture and infiltration or treatment. So we're...
No, but it's...
We've designed the system for that.
Well, it's not. The water is sucked up by the grass and the trees. I've never been there when the parking lot is flooded.
The one that you're removing up in the corner is... That is... it's more helpful to remove... not to have that?
Well, we'll make this one bigger.
That wasn't the question.
So it's going to... Pardon?
That wasn't his question. He asked about the one on the corner.
This one?
Yeah.
The one that's going away?
Why is it going away?
Because these neighbors have indicated that they have had water in their basements, and we don't want to have any infiltration in proximity to their properties. We don't want to contribute to any groundwater levels in proximity to their properties.
I thought that was supposed to perk it away.
Well, it does, but it goes into the groundwater table, right? When you infiltrate stormwater runoff into the ground, which is what we do to preserve the groundwater table, it contributes to the groundwater table. So you have an adjacent property owner that has groundwater issues in their basement. They don't want that in proximity to their property.
Okay, so you... it's going to runoff into this one, which is going to be bigger. Are these the open... may I, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Are these the open...
No, it's an underground system.
We're doing all underground completely?
Yep.
And the condo is going to be responsible for it?
Hundred percent.
Okay. Okay.
All set?
Yeah.
So Steve Cosmos is my landscape architect. He's out of Framingham. He prepared this one. This one's got the nice colors. It's actually changed a little bit. But the focus of this plan was basically to show the perimeter plantings. And, you know, he has a whole schedule of plantings here, all the way around the outside. I counted up, there's 80-odd trees going in and over 200 shrubs and bushes along the perimeter. There's going to be additional plantings, you know, additional foundation perimeter plantings. We didn't show those because the main focus here was to illustrate that we're buffering to the adjacent neighbors. So we have a six-foot solid fence that starts here, goes all the way around to the corner, comes up here, it's going to go all the way to this corner. There's a big rock outcrop here. This particular property owner, their representative, has asked us to extend the fence along the back and basically embed the fence in the ledge, which we're willing to do. They've also asked us to put some deciduous trees here, which on the revision that you have in your package, it's not as pretty, doesn't have the colors, but we have deciduous trees over here so that in time those will grow up over the top of the ledge and just provide additional high canopy screening.
What is the fence?
The fence is going to be six-foot stockade, either vinyl or wood. We have not selected one or the other at this point.
May I? You have to get rid of the whole stone wall along the front? I know you're going to lower the grade.
We do not have to. That is an open topic of conversation. So we... we are lowering the grade. Let me pull up my grade plan. So, you know, obviously, when we come in, we're at street grid. And we come in at, you know, we have like a 5% slope here. So it's a pretty modest slope in the driveway. The property's gently sloping uphill the whole way. We certainly could keep some portion of this stone wall. I think what we would do in that case is, you know, it would basically... This building is going to slide back, don't forget. So that'll allow us to, you know, keep the grade adjacent to that unit a little bit higher. And we may end up with, you know, kind of a negative slope behind the wall. We... if we kept the whole wall, it might actually slope back into the property behind that wall. But we could keep, you know, obviously, we could keep, you know, this chunk of that wall, I think, without any trouble. We could probably keep a piece of it over here as well, if that's something that the town wanted us to do.
I think that would let go a long way. I mean, I know it's your property. You can do what you do with it within the parameters. But I think one of the things that the neighborhood would appreciate is it's a beautiful old stone wall, and if you could keep it, that would...
If we can, we're going to... you know, we're going to try to keep it if we can be done. I mean, it's also subject to the driveway. And, you know, Mr. Ryan has asked that we widen the driveway in the entrance, and that may change and take some of it away. But we're looking at what... how much of it we can save. We're not opposed to saving.
Does he want the driveway widened so we can get trucks in there easier, even though it's the condo association? I know the fire trucks have to go in, but...
He wants a wider...
The plow doesn't have to go in.
And a broader turning radius. So I think that's basically... I think it's mainly a fire department consideration. But I'm going to explore that with him tomorrow.
Is there any other way of accessing this two-acre piece of property other than... Nah... Nah... Nah, I always say Manhattan Street, Manhattan Street, sorry.
There's no...
Manhattan. Is there any other...
No.
No, not really. I mean, there's a private way here, which we're not really sure whether we have rights to or not at this point. But no, Manhattan Street is the access point.
When we met with the fire... the department heads last week, the fire department requested an emergency access. Want to show them, Dan, what you're talking about?
Yeah, so the fire... the fire department wants us to put basically like a reinforced turf emergency access through here to this property line and basically put a gate in the fence. In case they ever had to access through there, they could. So we're agreeable to doing that.
Off that private way?
It would not be paved. It would be, you know, like a reinforced turf. It would look like lawn, but it's suitable to be driven on by a fire truck.
Dan, that is a private road that to the left there with those access, those three... those two houses?
That's our understanding is that it's a private way.
It's not a named street.
No.
No, it's... the houses are numbered... they have Manhattan Street numbers.
They've been there forever, I mean...
Yeah, and we believe it... we haven't done title work really, but we believe it to be a private way. It's not plowed by the town or anything. But the fire department's concern is that they have a way to get out or get in.
And you couldn't come through the parking lot because you have your... Well, I mean, could they act... could... I mean, I'm just... I mean, I don't know. You're the engineer. It's a great issue if you came in through St. Catherine's parking lot.
It's a great issue. So you've got... you got 12 feet of grade differential between here and here. So it becomes difficult.
Which is going down uphill from the parking lot.
I mean, this is okay. We don't... we don't have any issue with doing this. Or it's no problem.
When you're on the subject of saving the wall up to the right, it may be a possibility. It just... we did get a letter today. We just got a... tonight as we sat down from Mr. John Hayes, who lives across the street from that spot. And I guess the question is that... is that... he would want to see if he could save that particular tree there.
I had nothing to do with that.
Are you sure?
Yes. I like it, but I had nothing to do with it.
I don't think we can save that tree. I mean, I will look at it more closely, but...
Really?
I don't think we can save that. Well, we save a bunch of trees back in the corner here when we get rid of that stormwater infiltration system.
Look at that beautiful tree. Look at the pollution it's eating up.
We're going to put a whole bunch of other trees in there that aren't there now.
Planting over 80 trees.
And...
Again, I'll be dead before it looks like that. There's no way you could...
That's the good news.
Okay. Where is that tree? On this side of the wall or that side of the wall?
Probably right where...
It's over in this vicinity. I don't have it exactly located, but we, you know, we have a stormwater management system over there to handle the first, you know, 100 feet of the driveway. I mean, I can discuss with Mark whether there's some alternative to that, but we need to do something with that stormwater runoff.
Could you see?
That'd be a great approach. Make that bigger someplace else, like the other one.
Well, no, this is... this is higher, right? So this is all going uphill. So I mean, I get as much as I can right here. This is the pair of catch basins that gets everything from here into this system. Below that, we're downhill of this system. We can't go in there. So we have a second small system over in here, an underground system, a shallow underground system. But that's right in the vicinity of that tree. So I will... I mean, I'll discuss it with Mark, but I don't know. I don't have a lot of hope to save that tree.
Well, maybe he'll let you just run it right into... I mean, Manhattan Street's got... except, I think, stormwater, right?
There's a 20-inch drain line out there. He may just allow us to connect.
To connect, that would be great if he could.
Yeah.
It'd save you a lot of issues.
Yes, I will gladly tie myself to the tree. All right, he's next. I have a couple more, but okay.
Okay, just a couple of quick questions. I like the plan. I think it's... Just a couple of questions. On Manhattan Street, are you planning any kind of sign? You know, like, you know, Larry's Apartments, you know, welcomed, you know... Is there like Northwest Woods kind of a... Wizard Gardens kind of a sign on Manhattan Street? Is that in the works or not?
I... well...
It doesn't show on the plan, so...
No, I wouldn't compare it to, you know, Northwest or...
Well, I'm just saying a sign that... a sign that would show you where you're at. If someone was looking for... I don't know if this is going to have a name or not.
We hadn't thought about that yet. We haven't really given the project a name. It's not an apartment facility. You know, it's condominium, so it's individual ownership.
I just didn't see it on the...
They may come up with a name and, you know, come to you to put a small sign out there.
And then on the utility plan, where I'm looking, I imagine, my eyes aren't that good anymore, but all the LPs are light poles?
Yeah, what we're proposing here, instead of, you know, parking lot light poles, is to have residential-style lantern posts all the way along on both sides. So in front of... in front of every unit, these residential light posts. And then we have them in between in these gap areas. We have some as well. A couple on the center island, and basically that that would provide sufficient illumination. Oh, yeah, these are residential style.
They're going to be basically lamp, like you'd have out in front of your house.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, good. And those, that's the LP on the utility plans, right? Those are all the... Is there any sidewalk?
A sidewalk?
I couldn't tell on the...
On the right side, we have a sidewalk proposed. Coming in here, obviously, we have a... we come down here, the existing concrete sidewalk out front. So we have a handicap ramp, handicap ramp. And then we have a sidewalk running along adjacent to the driveway, all the way around to the back unit.
To the back, okay.
That's our plan.
And how much of a... how much of a backup do you have from the house to the plot line, lot line?
Oh, the setbacks?
Yeah.
They vary. So this one, so...
The requirement's 10 feet.
Yeah, the requirement's 10. On the back of these units is a small deck, going to set of stairs down to a patio. This is a little patio area. So for example, this building's 14 feet, 12.8, 30.8, 29, 22, 14, 18, 14.
So you make the 10 feet?
Yeah.
And it's 10 feet because it's general business?
In that district, there's the...
That back is 10 feet?
Rear yard requirement is 10 feet, yeah.
In the sewer, the underground water catcher, the holes in the concrete... I forget what they call it. The buried... the buried...
These are the buried...
The leaching galleys, the chambers, yeah.
These are the chambers.
These are the chambers, okay. We're familiar with those.
So you won't see anything from the surface. It'll just look like a patch of grass.
Grass, yeah, which will be...
And we have a pretty, you know, we're...
I mean, you've got a lot of green space there.
We're 59% open space, and we're only required to have 10%. So we're way under on impervious coverage, way over on green space than the bylaw requires.
That's it, Mr. Chairman. I'm all set right now.
All utilities are underground except for those lamp posts?
Yes.
Yes.
Although I would throw this out, the light department doesn't like underground utilities. They informed us. So they did say that they might ask us to connect these front buildings overhead to the existing overhead in the street, but that everything behind those two front buildings would be underground. That's something that the board doesn't take issue with. Just passing along a request from the light department.
Again, we have subdivision rules for a reason with burying lights or burying wires Again, we have subdivision rules for a reason with burying lights or burying wires because we all agreed however many years ago this was put in that. Okay, the existing ones we can't do anything about, but as we do subdivisions, we like to clean up the look of holes.
Yeah, but this is not a subdivision. It's a private condominium development. So we did say to them.
Doesn't fall under the same rules?
No.
Well, it's under, it's not a subdivision. So we're, so we're not required to build this out to subdivision standards.
It's a private driveway.
Oh, because we're not taking the road?
Yeah, no, no.
Taking the road, it's one lot?
It's all one lot.
There's no separate lots here. That's all one lot.
It's all one lot.
So those rules don't apply?
So, yeah, that's what we're saying. This is not a subdivision application. However, what, what Debbie's, you know, driving at is that in all of our residential subdivisions, this is a requirement. It's a requirement of most communities for new, new residential to underground the utilities. And so I was, I was there at the meeting when, um, Dan Morrissey from the light department asked if the first couple of units could be above ground. And he said that the light department does not have any staff that goes down in a hole. And that seems to be a, a little bit of a disconnect between is what our regulations are for new residential. Everything's gotta be on the, on the ground, but the light department only has, um, pole climbers that work above the ground. So I think this is something that we need to have a discussion with the light department about because, um. The trend in new, in all new development is to try to underground the utilities whenever possible. And so I would suggest that the board encourage the designer to keep everything underground so that it, it looks nice for aesthetic reasons.
They're not two different species, are they?
They're two different unions.
Two different unions.
And they are two different, you know, professions.
Well, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know. I don't, I'm not an electric person, but could we borrow somebody from, can we hire somebody to go in the hole?
We're proposing underground.
Okay.
This is still the conversation we had at the department meeting yesterday.
They, they, we, you know, we had this meeting and, and they made comments about you've gotta think about this, you've gotta think about that. And then the question came up about coming off poles and which poles we could bring which services off of. And by the way, we want you to think about connecting those first couple of buildings by overhead lines coming off the poles. And they'll have a whole list of things that they want. So that wasn't our idea. And I understand, as, as Mr. Halkiota said, a bit of a disconnect between what the, from a planning point of view you want. And what the light department is saying they'd like to see. And I imagine it can be worked out in some way.
Okay.
But it's not our proposal. It's really their comment.
All right, I, I still gotta be in my mind about Maxwell Ave, so. Was that you? No.
I had nothing to do with the actual development.
May I?
Yes.
Could you explain to me what a flexible development means, one of you?
Flexible residential development is a provision under the zoning bylaw that applies, that allows more buildings to be constructed on a, uh, single lot than normally would be allowed. For residential development purposes. And so the board, the zoning board looked at the area that we were dealing with.
Mm-hmm.
We exceed the area requirements for the number of units that we have. They also look at whether we're able to provide functionally equivalent services in terms of utilities and drainage and that type of stuff. And we think we do.
Okay.
In terms of functionally equivalent to what would normally be required to say in a subdivision. We're going to have, you know, drainage. We're going to control the flow. We're going to have adequate electricity, adequate water and all that. The roadway we think as laid out is adequate for access, adequate for emergency vehicles, but that's a discussion that we're having with the, uh, the fire department. Because Deputy Chief Maggio did raise some questions last week at our meeting about the width of the roadway. So Mr. American's gonna work with the deputy chief on that point. And, um, the, uh, there's one more and let me just, if I can look at the bylaw and refresh my recollection on, um, what they think about also when they're doing that.
Building separation.
The separation of the buildings. They normally would like, uh, the separation to be, um.
These are all.
Twice the required side yard.
Twice required side, okay.
The side yard is zero feet in this zone unless you provide any side yard and then it becomes ten feet. So twice that would be twenty. And for the most part, we exceed, our side yards exceed the twenty feet. But because of the angle of the roadway, there are a couple of spots where they agreed to grant relief on that point.
The zoning board?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's within the jurisdiction.
And these are eighteen, you, eighteen single family attached units?
There'll be eighteen condominiums, right?
Eighteen condo units and they're in blocks of two or three. So there's eight buildings.
And they're all for sale?
Yes.
Right.
And how many square foot feet per unit?
One fifteen hundred square feet of living space.
Okay.
The, the layout and you may have, we, those, and we can go, come to that, but the layout is, the ground level is, uh, two car garage and some storage area. Then above that is living, dining, kitchen area. And then the upper level, um, is bedrooms with bath. The, um.
Is it just two bedrooms?
Two bedrooms, right. Yep. So this is, and the design of it, and, and Mr. Donahue can take us through that, I think, as the architect, but the design is, um. We think not as, not to be overpowering, the third, the upper level is a lot of roof and dormers rather than being a third story, a full story, uh, the way it's laid out.
So the first story.
We contrasted it with the, when we were, with the zoning board, we were comparing, there was some comparison. And some of the submittals by neighbors included photos of the, what I call the marina project down at Lennox Street. And it's not like that. The, the design of the property is very different from that. And so it's intended, it's, it's almost a two and a half story building. But we're building on slab. We're not going to have basements and the, and the parking will be at ground level. So Mr. American said, it'll be two car garage and two parking spaces outside on the driveway, outside of each unit. So we have four parking spaces per unit where three spaces are required under the bylaw. So we satisfy and exceed the required parking. But that allows extra parking if somebody has visitors also.
Because your road width is twenty feet, so there's no on-street parking.
No on-street.
There shouldn't be any on-street parking. I mean, theoretically, somebody could drive around it, but you don't want to have it on a regular basis.
It was kind of rhetorical, right. I'm, it's just, I'm thinking out loud. So that you're, you're two and a half stories, so you're ten twenty, so you're under the thirty foot.
We don't, we don't exceed, uh, the, the requirement of the, the limitation rather on height of thirty feet in that district. So we conform to all the dimensional requirements with respect to height of the building, the, um, front yard, side yard, rear yard setbacks. We did get relief with respect to the setback from the other district, uh, the district boundary line between the residential and business district. But the, I would suggest that the reason for that hundred and fifty foot setback is to protect residential districts from non-residential uses.
Right.
We're making this a residential use. There's no reason you need to protect one residential area from another residential area. And then the separation of the buildings on the, on the side yards, they gave us some relief on that. It was very limited relief was necessary, but that's because of the, um, the layout. As you can see, the yards in several spots widen as you go back, so they're well above the twenty feet. And where they may be less, it's sometimes an offset between the rear corner of one, for example, the first building on the left and the building above it. They really, their side yard where they might touch each other is very limited. It's like here, uh, corners. It's not, it's not.
The corner of the building, not the, not the windows or something like that?
Right, right. So, you know, the bylaws, they're looking out on open space there.
And the red little boxes, are those the torches?
At-grade patios.
At-grade patios, okay. So no decks?
No decks. There's a little, there's basically, there's a small deck here from the first floor living space and a set of stairs down to the patio.
The landing.
It's not a, not a deck deck, you know, it's basically just a, this is set of stairs.
So let's say, let's say they wanna put up little sheds.
Condo.
Condom. Well, yeah, but, well, the condo association can allow it.
Well, it can allow it and that, that would be subject to the requirements of the zoning bylaw in terms of.
I understand. That I get. I'm just wondering, what are you gonna do with all this little green where, right here? It's just gonna be open green space? No, uh, yeah, there.
Yep, this is just gonna be green space, grass and plants.
I just got one more question. This is a dumb question, Dan. And private, private road. Trash is, I mean, is it, is waste management going down there with your truck or is there dumps, is there dumpsters that people are gonna take their trash to?
That's, that's the question the health department asked us during the department head.
Did you see that? I could be unhealthified.
Yeah, you could be. And, um, uh.
Cause I know some apartment complexes that they have dumpsters.
Well, my comment was, we would like to have the trash picked up, I think. Uh, the people who own these units will be paying taxes, uh, as much as anybody in any other similarly valued house. And yet they won't be getting the services of the town plowing their road. Uh, it'll be plowed by the condominium association, but I think they ought to get trash picked up and we'll talk to the town about that. Has been decided.
All right, so there's no dumpster fenced in dumpster area, okay.
We, we hope we won't need.
Okay.
Then you're really gonna have a problem with the, with the street.
No, I mean, if the town doesn't pick up, you know, the condo associates, association can hire curbside pickup, just like a house. It's just that the association pays directly for it.
Right, but they've gotta get somebody in there to pick it up.
Yeah.
They're not coming in in a, in a station wagon.
No.
No, but, um, we're building this big enough for fire engines to get in and out and a garbage truck can also get in and out.
Just trying to save the wall and the tree that, that I'm gonna look at every day.
We'd like to, but Mr. Ryan has asked us to widen the opening, so we do have to do that. But we'd like to save the wall and we'd like to save whatever proportions of that wall.
Well, maybe there's, maybe there's something for negotiation with Mark.
But on the question of.
He's a tree guy.
He's very reasonable to deal with. But the, on the question of the trash pickup that Mr. Pechikowski asked, that, um, that was a health department's question and my response was, we think we should get trash pickup. I, I'm not aware of any valid reason why, um, trash shouldn't be picked up in, in a complex such as this.
Is trash picked up at Polaroid? What, what, that's the thing called up there?
I don't know how.
But we're not talking about a large space like up in Woods. We're talking about eighteen units.
Right. Okay.
It's something we're gonna look into.
Okay, I was just curious if there was a, a dumpster area designated.
No, we haven't got one. We hope we don't need it.
Okay.
On the building, I just have one more question. And when they, when you're looking at the ridge, is that storage? Is that an attic for storage? Where, where the difference between the third floor and the ridge or is?
Above.
Yeah, that would basically be possibly an air handler, mechanical space. There really won't be any lockup type attics in these buildings. It's.
Very small.
So because you don't have basements, are you doing Navien systems or?
Yeah, there'll be a mechanical closet probably in the garage where they have.
Yeah, there's room behind the garage for some storage areas.
But for your heating system and your, it's gonna be one of those new fangled units? I don't, I don't have anything else. I.
Any other questions?
What's the length of the driveway?
It's, uh, three hundred and eighty feet.
It's an awfully long driveway.
You call him this the driveway, the road?
Yes.
Okay.
It looks like a subdivision, but it's not a subdivision. I understand that. But you're also talking about two minutes berm and this is roadway. And I think it's too narrow. Okay, they're twenty foot all the way around. I think it needs granite curbing like we do with all, even though we're not gonna own it. It's gonna be the appearance of it in this town in two years when the private contractor plow rips up all the berm as they do everywhere. I'm just surprised it wasn't designed in. Now, you said the sidewalk runs all the way around. I don't see it running all the way around.
It ends, I think, at the last.
It's on the right side and it ends at the top. So it connects to the existing sidewalk here and runs up the right side and goes to there. Obviously, this is a chopper rock, so it's not from there.
Any further questions?
We got a few comments. So we, Patrick and I did review the plan, excuse me, and we held the department review meeting last week. And, um, some of what came out of that meeting was discussed already. We did receive comments from Mark Ryan dated February fifteenth. The board has a copy of that in your packets. And we received a letter from Daniel Morrissey from the light department with his comments on the project. As part of our review, um, I noticed that there are a number of retaining walls being proposed, um, at a varying heights. But some walls will be up to four feet in height. And I had recommended that a fence be placed on the top of the wall where it's, you know, gets to be around four feet. Anything between two and four feet, there should be a fence so that somebody doesn't inadvertently walk off the wall. And so there were, there are walls behind seven of the eight proposed buildings. The other requirements that are in the, uh, site plan and view rules and regulations require a project schedule to be submitted. A certification on the plan that the project will be in compliance with the American Disabilities Act. I had pointed out that the, uh, the boundary of the zoning district is not clearly shown on the plan. And that's because it's, it shares the property line and it's, it's hard to follow, hard to see both. The owners of two eight five Manhattan Street should be identified on the plan. And I had also noticed that the sidewalk, um, was missing in front of, um, um, the units on the lower right-hand side of the plan. There would be five homes that would not have a sidewalk, but the rest of the, the homes in the neighborhood would have sidewalk. And I think it makes sense to just continue that along for the whole, whole, um, whole road to provide safe access for any pedestrians. There was a comment that Mark Ryan had made related to mail delivery. And I believe the post office is now requiring that mailboxes all be on a slab and in one unit. And, um, I suggest that you contact the post office, determine what they're gonna want, cause they, they're not gonna deliver to individual mailboxes or homes. And figure out where you're gonna put that in, in a place that's safe to have a pullout for people to pull over and grab their mail.
Sure.
Why, why do they do that?
Go to the house, huh?
No, um, yeah, this has been the case for, for now, I think, um, around five or ten years that they, they've really started to, um, refuse to make any more individual home deliveries. And this had started back, um, on my last job where, um, we had an issue with this. And so they started to require the, um, groups, groups of mailboxes together. This had come up on the planner's listserv just recently that this is going on in other towns. So it's, it's a policy of the, the postal service that they, because of their staffing, they can't just go to everyone's house anymore and this is the way they like to do it. So it's good to plan ahead on that and figure out where you wanna put that in a safe place where there's enough room for people to pull off and stop and grab their mail. And so I, I also encourage trying to preserve as much of the stone wall, um, and vegetation along the street as possible. And if that, that tree that, you know, uh, that we've discussed about saving has to go. It would be nice to see, um, a couple of bigger plantings go in right along Manhattan Street. Bigger caliper trees as opposed to just the, the little two and a half caliber tree. Have a couple of bigger ones out there that'll, um, provide an attractive, um, entrance. And, and following up on, um, Ernie's question about a sign for the, the development. It, it, it would be a good idea to have that wrapped into the planning board's approval so you don't have to go back to the zoning board or the planning board later to get approval for a sign for the development. So I'd encourage you to figure out if you wanna do that and if you do have it designed to figure out where you wanna put it and we'll include it into, um, the permitting process.
Now, the width of the, the driveway, um, is it just at the mouth that we're talking about? That, when they said twenty-four feet, they're looking forward?
They went back about fifty feet.
Mark wanted it back to, back to this area.
And then tapered to twenty, he says, right?
Yeah, and, and larger roundings at the mouth.
Well, I can understand the, the opening on Manhattan Street to try to swing a truck into that off in Manhattan. They may want it wider.
We're just trying to strike a balance. You know, you don't want a sea of pavement.
Right.
And we're seeing a lot more on these condominium types of projects where, you know, where their, towns are actively trying to get away from unnecessary pavement and having more open space and green space. And basically just trying to provide, you know, what's appropriate for the number of units. So this is where, you know, we, we do this a lot with condominium project, a twenty foot wide driveway.
And, and low-impact design principles require trying to reduce pavement width, and, and so there is that balance that, um, that the designer is working on between the town engineer and the, and the fire department. The fire department wants more room, and, and so there is a balance there.
Fire department's always want more pavement.
Uh, the more pavement that goes down, um, the more, still more management system has to be designed to, to have a capacity that will handle the runoff from that pavement.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I mean, we still take questions, but it might, um, my thinking right there, we're not gonna be able to approve this tonight, right? We're missing a, a, a plan, we're-
There's a lot of little changes, is that something?
There's probably enough things we've discussed, and you still have to discuss with fire department, with Mark Ryan, so you still have some tweaks to the plan that you're gonna have to make. So I guess we wait till we get a, um, a closer to finished product plan?
We could continue this on till next meeting, perhaps? Would you have these changes?
For your next meeting.
It's in two weeks, no?
The eleventh. We do have, um, some, some, uh, neighborhood residents here with public hearing.
Sure, I was gonna, I'm gonna keep it open for them, too. Anyone, uh, from the public who has any questions or comments, uh, we'll open it up to you at this time. And, uh, just state your name and address, and, uh, yes, sir?
Uh, I'm John Hayes, and I wrote the letter that you have in front of you arguing for keeping the big tree on the corner of the site.
And your, your address, your address is, what, what's your address?
Five Maple Street.
Five Maple, okay, thank you.
It's the house on the corner of Manhattan and Maple Street. And every morning when I walk out my front door, I see that tree across the street.
Here, Dan.
And I'm very jealous of having it disappear.
You give it to Dan?
I don't really see any practical reason why it has to go, uh, because the lawn that it's standing on is lower than the lowest porthlab of any of the buildings around it. So it's not, as far as I can see, a drainage problem. And as long as you keep the stone wall along the sidewalk, uh, the ground will still exist around the base of the tree. Uh, what I'm afraid of is, uh, and I was encouraged by hearing that the stone wall might be retained because the drawings show the stone wall removed and the ground tapered down from the tree to the street, which would mean that about half of the root system of the tree would disappear. And I think that's not really something that has to happen in order to be able to build the project. So I'd really appreciate it if you'd look at that issue and see if there's a possible way that you can accomplish what you want to accomplish with the development of the project without losing the tree in the process. It's a wonderful tree, um, to my eye, it's thirty to thirty-six inches in diameter, and no new tree or hump of new trees that you could put in is good, ever going to come anywhere close to replacing it.
Is that something that could be a condition?
Um, yeah, yeah, okay.
Well, I mean, just from a, the, the viewpoint of they're gonna try, they're gonna be selling these condominiums, and it, it kinda gives it the, an old stone wall, a big old tree. It gives it a little more elegant frontage, so maybe it's in their advantage to, you know, I think it does anyway, an old stone wall with a big old, hundred-year-old tree looks a little more established and elegant.
I, I think that we'd all like to see that. I think what you have to do, though, is you do have to see Mark on the drainage and see if this can be-
We have a drainage system over there, so I need to discuss with him whether there's any way that could go away.
We, we can't-
There's always a way.
Well, we, we can't-
We put a man on the moon, we brought him back, we can fix that.
We, we're open to that, but, um, you know, we've got engineering issues, we've got access issues. This is the only access to this site. So we, and Mr. Ryan's asking us to widen it from what we first proposed, and tinker with it in terms of the angle of it and so forth. So we're going to work on that. Mr. Halkeotis has just mentioned that the post office is probably gonna want a separate pad for mailboxes, and that, um, maybe we have to have a turnout somewhere for that. You know, these are the things that have to be done, and we're going to try to do everything that makes sense, that's reasonably possible, and if we can save trees, we will. But, um, we don't know tonight, sitting here, whether we can save-
I understand, I understand.
We understand, I, we all understand, and the, uh, we won't find out until sometime between now and the next time we have, have you folks in. So if that's something you can look into, that would be terrific.
And see what we can do, but this, it'll depend on engineers talking to each other to a great extent.
Thank you.
Continuing on about the tree problem for a moment, um, I think that issue about that tree is one thing, but just to the left of that tree, there's a huge evergreen.
Fine, yep.
And that, I, in best of all worlds, I'd like to see that stay true, but-
Yeah, well, you might, it might be a bridge too far.
It's the one that needs to stay there, so.
Mr. Hearn's gonna start throwing stuff at you.
The evergreen could, I think, manage to live if that group of houses on the right-hand side of the driveway could slide back another ten to fifteen feet into the big open area that's, um, uh, behind where I think is unit number eight at the top. And if you would be willing to take a look at that, I think you could end up with the same number of units that you have at the moment on the site, but leave, uh, that evergreen with enough space around it so that it doesn't die off shortly after the buildings are completed.
May I? So is there a reason why you-
This is drainage.
All of it?
All of it, too.
Okay.
Well, I know that-
So, you know, we can slide, you know, three or four feet to get the twenty-foot setback, but sliding fifteen feet is a whole different animal.
Is it ledge?
And we're looking to make it perhaps somewhat larger because-
All the trees on the site.
No, not all of them, Dan, we're not, you know.
No, but what, that, the area, and I'm looking at, um, sheet four, uh, of your package, the infiltration area there, as shown, may very well have to be enlarged somewhat because we're removing the infiltration area, uh, at the upper corner that backs up to the river of our houses.
They're getting rid of that and going here.
Making this even bigger by doing that.
We're gonna have to make that bigger, um, and that doesn't leave a lot of room.
And we'll already slide it back, you know, four feet or so. I mean, I can make all that work, I'll slide it back as much as I can, but-
Yep.
I know with-
There's a limit.
But you also have to pick up this into the capacity here.
Right.
So I mean, it has to get bigger. Limiting it even more.
And we've got to keep the separation between the two, the three units building and the two unit building.
I, I understand that, I appreciate the problem. I don't, I mean, it is, some of us like the convent, but that's not even the point. And, and if they're willing to work with, uh, wo- work with us to get a little something that the rest of us are gonna look at, we'd appreciate that.
We, we, we think, we, we're open to that.
Okay, we have to-
We started this, uh, project with the idea that the wall was going to go. We're now looking at how we can keep as much of that wall as possible. We'll look at whether we can keep the deciduous tree that's in the front corner, the front, right there. But there are limitations with the site also, um, so.
Okay, I-
If I could throw in, my third thing was using the water. I, I am open to whether there's gonna be a flood of water coming off of the driveway out onto Manhattan Street.
That's, that drainage system.
That's a fairly steep roadway going up, and I have this picture of a chute of water coming down and bursting out onto the street. Uh, is it gonna be picked up within the property line somehow?
Yeah, we have catch basins at the end of the driveway.
Great.
But that's where that water was going over here to where this tree is that, that we want to try to save. So that's where I'm gonna meet with Mark and see what I can do.
Trees drink water.
Trees drink water, yes.
Thirty gallons per three-inch caliper, wasn't that the deal? Twenty-three gallons per-
We have that information back in the office, but they didn't drink a surprising amount of water.
We're, we're open to-
Okay, alright, I know, I know, we're, we're, we got to go see Mr. Ryan and see if we could hook into the Hatton Street as opposed to making a smaller catch basin over here, a little into the sewer system, right?
This is the tension between, um, you know-
The balance.
Balancing, uh, trees and open space with requirements to catch the water and do something with it, with requirements for how big a roadway versus, you know, one, we'd like it twenty feet.
I'd like it twenty feet, too.
The fire department might like it larger, um, and, and as Mr. Halkeotis said, uh, everybody's got an idea on this. Um, and we've got people who want us, you know, who would love us to save, uh, these trees, and we'd like to save the ones that can be saved. The other hand, neighbors are asking us to take trees down. So we're trying to please as many people as possible.
I understand that.
But I know we can't please all the people.
I, I understand that, and I, and I appreciate you're even thinking about it. How's that? I feel like we've had made some headway because we're actually thinking about a hundred-year-old tree. That is a big deal for me.
I know that.
Any, uh, further comments from anyone from the public? Anyone wants to speak, make a comment? Seeing none?
Can, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Were you talking marketing-wise in the range pricing on these units?
Good evening, board. Uh, my name's Mike Sullivan, I'm one of the partners in the development team. My other partner, Derek Fitzgerald, uh, is coming home from Ireland. He had an emergency, so he couldn't be here. So I'm representing the partnership. The pricing on these units has not yet been set. Uh, as, as you, you probably know, there's a lot going on, a lot of change going on in the housing market these days with the interest rates and the change in the tax law. So we haven't really been able to determine that yet. That's going to, that's going to take place after we, after we get the, uh, pass the permit.
And it's also affected by what we're required to do in terms of, you know, we, we started with nineteen units, now we're at eighteen. Um, so that affects the cost per unit. Uh, how much we may have to do in the way of engineering and changes and this and that will affect it. We don't know yet.
Originally, we were looking at twenty units. But engineering brought it back down to nineteen, and then, of course, the zoning board of appeals hearing brought it down to-
Eighteen.
Eighteen. And it's, it's not an easy site because we've got ledge to deal with. We've also got constraints in terms of building because we've got a school next door. So we have to, um, take steps. And we've been asked by the pastor to, um, uh, provide information about, um, you know, what our plans are, construction schedules, and what steps will be taken to make sure that, uh, there'll be no, um, disruption, or as little disruption as possible for the school itself, as well as, of course, safety issues. We've got a building there to be removed, and that is an older building that is going to have, I'm sure, some asbestos and other considerations that are gonna add to the cost. So we don't know yet what all these costs are going to be, and therefore, we can't tell you what we'd like to sell these for in order to recoup the costs and make a reasonable profit on it. But there's some, we'll have more detail on that. But even now, as we're talking, this project is changing, some of the requirements, some of the requests. And we still don't know everything that the engineering department will want or the fire department will want, so.
These units are gonna be marketed probably in the spring of, uh, two thousand twenty. So we have no idea what the conditions are gonna be at that, at that point. Whatever the, whatever the market value of these units are, they're, that's gonna be the price of them. Whatever people are willing to pay for them, but we don't know it.
But you had to have some sort of business plan to go to the bank.
We, we have a range. We, we haven't gone-
What's your range?
We haven't gone to the bank yet.
What's your range?
Well, Mr. Porro, is that, I mean, that's not really the subject of this hearing.
No, but I was just curious.
We don't really, Mr. Sullivan said, we don't really know.
That's fine, I mean, I-
Okay, no, that's fine, hold on. Nope, that's good, thanks.
When I, I don't wanna commit to something and then say, and then we come, you know, we give a range, people are gonna take that as gospel, shall I say, considering what we're dealing with? But I don't know that, I don't know what it is. I mean, Mr. Sullivan wants to speak to it, that's fine. My job is usually to keep people from saying things that I think we really can't say yet until we know.
Very good.
Any further questions? Um, I think we all have our marching orders until next time. There's a few things we have to look into, and, uh-
Right.
We will see you on the eleventh.
I make a motion for-
Yeah, I think you need, you wanna continue?
I'll make a, well, this isn't a, this is supposed to be a public hearing.
It is a, it is a hearing, so, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion for continuance. Mr. Hearn is, two weeks, you wanna go two weeks, or you wanna go after that, or what's?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, we'll, and then if there's any change, you can go, Paul. So I'll, I'll make a motion for continuance on the March eleventh.
Why don't we just say seven fifteen, 'cause I don't think we have anything on the agenda yet.
Are these no good, and are we gonna get new ones, gonna kill some more trees in the morning tomorrow?
The trees are already dead.
We're gonna have to kill some more trees, yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Eventually, they'll submit everything digitally.
Any further discussion? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Seven fifteen P M.
It's five to nothing, we'll see you at seven fifteen.
Can we, can Mr. Morrissey send an updated memo?
Dan, I know what, uh, just curious, will, uh, like, if, if in the summer, will the parish let you request their parking lot to do construction and stuff? Or are you gonna have to access everything off of Manhattan for construction?
I don't think we've discussed that with the parish, um, I don't know the answer to that.
I hear they need money, throw them a couple bucks.
Like construction.
I had a couple of bets, say, why aren't we making that bet on housing?
No, I was wondering if St. Catherine's gonna let you cross the parking lot.
Church is sick of doing good work, so what am I supposed to say to that?
I've got that.
If St. Catherine's, uh, will let you cross the parking lot for construction purposes.
We'll have to see.
Uh, it's, or, you know, instead of coming in and out of Manhattan Street for everything. It'd be nicer if they would in the summertime.
From its net housing for tax or-
Thank you very much.
Alright.
Thank you. Don't tell them which one is my car off, okay?
I'm sorry, I don't need it anyway.
Oh, we're done. No, we have-
Oh, rezoning and other business.
See you later.
Yeah, tomorrow night, um, eight o'clock on the nose. I couldn't get the secretary, she couldn't tell me.
So the board has, um, a meeting scheduled with the board of selectmen tomorrow night at eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen.
I thought we were getting on their early schedule.
They, they had something else, they pushed us back from eight to eight fifteen. And so the board appeals is, and the planning board is scheduled to meet. Um, Ted Brovitz, our consultant, is, um, gonna run the PowerPoint presentation that he didn't get to see when he met with the board. Um, and we'll take questions, um, from the selectmen and the board appeals on the project.
So now it's eight fifteen?
Yes.
The girls moved that up a little bit, so I said I went right over on railroad.
I mean- We don't have on the agenda, um, discussion of town meeting warrant articles, but we will at the next meeting. And, um, this afternoon, I wrote a draft article for, um, what we discussed at the last meeting to establish that moratorium. So I just gave you a copy to, to take a look at, and that can get discussed in more detail at the next meeting.
And we have to put that on the moratorium for vehicle, open lot vehicle storage has to go on the warrant?
Yes, and we have to hold a hearing.
And you gave us two copies, or are they different?
They're the same.
Okay.
I noticed it was a place for these to park cars up that, it used to be the Iron Horse or, or the Nicholas. And I don't see many cars up there, was there?
We had that discussion last, when we had the, uh, um, when we talked about BACH, and I brought that up when we were talking about that. And Mr. Hearn, uh, was the attorney way back when on that, and that had been grandfathered in. 'Cause I had mentioned the fact that there were BACH cars.
Yeah, I get it.
At the Iron Horse. And he said that that was grandfathered in, and that was, he, he was involved in that way back when it first came up.
I was wondering if there was any change because I-
They may have moved them around or whatever.
I don't think there's much, I don't see anything up there.
Yeah, they pushed them someplace else, Joe. I don't know where, but, yeah, that lot's been empty.
Yeah, it's, it's smattering, sometimes there's-
Yeah, just a cup. But if you see-
They are allowed there.
Cars, storage?
Yes.
There was a time with, where some of the employees- There was a time where some of the employees were, had to take a shuttle, and they had to go around, and they, I think they scrapped that because it was too, it was too cumbersome.
You had to wait forty-five minutes on the shuttle to get to a witch walk operation.
To go across the street, yeah.
Yeah, so they probably didn't find it too efficient.
But they were allowed, and I had the, during the BAC talks, that came up with Mr. Hearn, and he said that that was allowed.
I just noticed, noticed lately that there really was hobbying and...
Have you seen, have you seen the old Bessemer Buick parking lot?
It's Tesla.
Yeah, they're all Teslas parked there.
Do we have a Tesla dealer in Norwood?
And that happens to be in the highway business zone where open lot storage is not allowed use.
But you're not using his own vehicles in there.
They're not, it's, I don't know if a auto dealership license has been issued to that property, and so I asked the building inspector to look into it.
And you got an attaboy from the governor? Attaboy.
Yes, so Debbie's holding up the letter from the state saying that we've been designated as a municipal vulnerability preparedness community, and that was a product of the grant that we received in the, in the climate change planning that we did. Once a town's been designated as an MVP community, it enables us to apply for certain grants that other communities are not eligible for unless they are a designated community, and those grants can help to do things to get ready to deal with the impacts of climate change, to mitigate or prepare or avoid the impacts of climate change, and so we've actually been waiting to hear from the state about the next round of grants, we heard they were coming in November and then December, and then I heard last week that they should be announcing grants probably the end of February or March, and so, once they make that announcement, we're gonna look at what options we might have for trying to do some things to mitigate the impacts of climate change.
So, the one, the greening up Route One that we got told no about?
Yep.
Would this be something...
It could be, but I, we had a meeting with people from Mastart, from the state, about a month ago at their office, and I asked the highway engineers about planting trees within their right-of-way, and they basically said they don't allow it.
Okay, there's trees, and then there's New Jersey barriers that run all the way down the middle of Route One. Okay, no trees, how about...
Debbie, you can probably just do it, you know?
How about some grass? How about, how about we come through denim and then we look like, holy moly?
Maybe we could just paint the Jersey barriers green.
Okay, how about we get the arts to, it's a mess.
Put some turf on it.
You all joke, and everybody goes, you know what, I pull into Norwood, it looks like a dump.
No, I haven't heard that.
You haven't, you haven't.
I think...
Do you ever talk to anybody from, that's not from Norwood?
Debbie, I love you on all this, but I'm, you're driving in Norwood, now, there are parts of Route One that are old and don't look good, but you come down and you hit BAC and all of that, and there's green all the way down.
But what about, right as we come into town?
And there's green on the right, I mean, there are parts that are old, and, you know, you gotta remember, Route One was built in nineteen thirty-three.
Right, but we didn't always have those barriers up there, even thirty years ago, we didn't have those barriers there.
On the middle of the road?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think that's probably a safety issue.
Purely, purely safety.
To keep cars from jumping the curb and going into the oncoming traffic.
Which we experienced prior to those barriers going in, and that's what brought it up.
Well, Paul was trying to get a little green stuff going on Route One, along with our car dealers.
I don't know why they don't allow trees, but, I don't know why they don't allow trees because they probably, whatever.
Gotta maintain them.
They gotta maintain them, they gotta, I...
Yeah, what he said is, you know, if trees don't have any leaves or people can't drive off the road and hit them, then it's okay, but on state-numbered roads, apparently, they are not interested in seeing a greening of those roads.
So, VFW is not a state road, then?
Oh, it is, but that was...
Grandfathered in?
Long, that was under the Metropolitan District Commission, a separate agency.
Oh, the MDC that they got rid of?
That road was, like, a whole thing, that whole VFW thing was a whole thing.
Right from the Charles River line there, at Route One.
Well, yeah, well, Memorial Drive and Starwood Drive were part of the Charles River Greenway that was designed by Olmsted, so that, and that was under the control of the Metropolitan District Commission.
I wonder if, if the Parkway was as well, because if you take that to the arboretum down at the circle, that's all Olmsted, and all the way in to the Fenway.
You can tell, area, it's said it'd been well planned and designed like that.
I mean, granted, you can't, like you said, Debbie, you can't unring a bell, when they built the high Route One in thirty, in nineteen thirty-three, they could have opened it up a little bit, put a median strip in there, but they didn't, so we're stuck with what's there.
It can look better, I think it can look better, and I think Paul is, Paul and Patrick are working their tails off on it.
But I think the new, the new ones, I think the, in front of BAC Toyota and Honda, they have plenty of green space down, all the way down to...
Oh, you mean in front of the car dealers?
Yeah, but the other stuff, I mean, what are you gonna do in front of Don Wally's? I mean, you're gonna, you know, how are you gonna fix that? You could have the state...
You're gonna take out a lane to make it green? No, seriously.
No, I love Don and Wally's, but they're on state property, they're parking cars on state property, okay? I just stuck my tongue on the third rail, I love Don and Wally's, I do, but they got cars parked on state property.
The bylaw does require, as you know, like, a twenty-foot green strip, and over time, as these older properties get redeveloped, because real estate on Route One is pretty valuable, Don and Wally's, at some point, somebody's gonna offer them enough money to get them to sell the property, and when that is redeveloped, that's the opportunity with which we have to get them to plant the green strip, the twenty-foot strip, and this is what we did at nine forty, Route One, on Mr. Spiegel's property, the existing conditions plan showed that cars used to park right with, right in the state layout, and their redesign eliminated that parking and provided an island in front, and that's how we do it, just one lot at a time as they come up for a redevelopment, that's when our opportunity is to make them...
Because that's the only time we get to ask.
That's our opportunity to comply with the bylaw and build that twenty-foot green strip.
I mean, you can't...
And if my board members really think that we should bury the wires, maybe a call to the electric department in support of that, would help.
I thought we had a meeting, didn't we have a meeting, Al?
Yes.
Seven, eight years ago or something with, with Jim?
He did come in one time, I think, was that the main issue or was it...
That was the main issue.
That was the issue, and at the time, Paul, Donna, he said, you know, what, Paul didn't remember that the, that the regulations had been changed, and he said, you know, why are we requiring everything underground, and the board invited Jim in and talked to him, but this is something that I'll talk to the light department about internally and see if there's a way we can address that.
Yeah, I think, in talking with Jim, okay, Malcolm was in charge at the time.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
And, you know, he probably approached it, and it got shot down, so I think I read...
Well, I know that the light department, they were in lawsuits for a long time with Lou Patruzzi up at the development next to my house, because Lou wanted underground, and it was a whole thing on who was gonna pay for it, and that was in court for years. I don't know, we still hold the money on him, by the way? Talbot Farms?
So, it's my understanding, I haven't done a complete review of that file, 'cause nothing has really come up as an issue that we have.
I bet you don't have Asbills.
But it's my understanding that there was some remaining work to be done, I saw that there was a letter of credit, I think, in the file, and that was over ten years ago, and it's likely gone, and so, I don't know, I don't think we're holding any money, and I think there might be work remaining, but I'm not sure.
It's not like Lou to let us hold his money.
And this is why we don't do letters of credit, there's bad news.
See you tomorrow night, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Anything further, we're all set?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm done.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.
Free, we gotta get on this thing.